Okay, I'll call the trial balance review workshop to order and what I'll do is after we get done, before we start the regular meeting, I'll adjourn this one and we'll move into that one. So Mel, take over.
Okay, one of the things that I have printed out for you before is a so-called trial balance. And when we print that out of our system, it's some nineteen pages long if you suppress the zeros and don't allow any page breaks in between funds. This report that I put together is something that I've actually been doing for years. I don't know that I've ever shared it with the city council.
That's one year ago.
Yeah, and I do this really for our auditors to, in essence, help them in resetting the beginning balances for all of these funds. This year, we've taken on that role ourselves. So anyway, this is kind of a work paper, but if it is something that you think is friendlier than the treasurer, than a trial balance report, I can tell you, it is for me. And you can get rid of a couple of columns and the whole thing can fit on one page. It actually, Joan, as you know, years ago, you used to do a treasurer report for every, for every meeting. And it looked, it actually didn't have this much detail. It didn't have like the beginning balance revenues, expenses, but it was a report that showed where you're at. So this is something that, you know, we could do as often as you want us to do it. So anyway, it's just something to think about. I think funds one through five, everybody's real comfortable with what those are all about. General Fund Fire Sewer and the Swimming Pool. And probably the questions would start at fund six. Fund six, the so-called Community Development Fund, actually, it's a separate checking account that we run, that is run for the grants, the John Graham Shelter Grant, the Senior Housing Grant. That's why you see this $720,000 in expenses. It's those grants are running through there. Once those grants have been run through that account, fund six, actually, fund six actually has a dual role. One is that it takes care of these grants, but also fund six is our revolving loan fund. And so you can see, I can tell you, the senior housing project is done. The John Graham Shelter project is not totally done yet, but those are just simply pass-through money. So when you see the beginning year of $79,000, there was two loans out there, one to the Maynard Building, another one was the first loan to Shear Cuts. No money was paid back during the fiscal year by, by the Maynard, by Addison Housing Limited. Some dollars were paid back by Shear Cuts, and then we made a $50,000 loan. And some of those loan, some of those payments have been made. And we ended the fiscal year with $34,066.19 in cash. And that's what, if there was a, if there was an application from the revolving loan fund, that's right there is the only money that's available. The revolving loan fund has a policy that was adopted by the council. There's a committee comprised of seven or 10 members that they do not have authority to make the loan. The loan, all they can make is a recommendation to the city council. So if there's no grant projects going on, running through fund six, it's the revolving loan fund.
Do you think, and I understand exactly what you're saying, but I wonder if the development grants that go through there should zero out?
Yeah.
Do you think it'd be wise to break that out over time and have just revolving loan fund as one, so we know what that balance is? And just because it's...
Well, let me tell you why.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm curious.
The reason why they're together is any of, any of these grants, going back to and including the Maynard Building, there is annual reporting requirements to the state of Vermont through their online grants administration, all right? And so when we are reporting to them, we are, we are not only reporting grant activity, but we're reporting revolving loan fund activity as well. So it's all, and actually, the revolving loan fund money came from community development funds to begin with.
That was paid back, yeah, yeah, I realize that, okay.
That's right, right. So that's...
If that's the way you've got to report it, that's, that's fine.
Yeah. Let me, let me tell you one, one thing, Bill. I wasn't working for the city when they set this system up. And, and I don't blame Joan because Joan was working here, but I can tell you, there was a bit of a mistake that occurred, in my opinion. I think Joan agrees with me.
You told me why, with the number of accounts.
Yeah, they created a nine-fund account for the city of Vergens instead of a 999-fund account, all right? And that's what we're living with. So we, I can tell you, I had to, I, fund five, to be able to have a swimming pool account separate, I had to move the entire watershed operation into fund nine, to make room for that, so.
Well, so you can't change it now?
Well, it deals with losing the account, the front-end account numbers are lost because you can't, they can't, they're one as opposed to O1. So we...
And is that a number?
Yeah, yeah. We can move with that.
Assets and liabilities, just in general?
In this, yeah, in this, in this instance, the assets are those three notes. The balance of the three notes, two is Shear Cuts and one with, on the mortgage on the Maynard Building are the assets. And the liability is really deferred revenue against those notes that, it's, those are the balance. Those are, those are the notes. And the liability, I know it's, it's the, it's the future, it's the future revenue against those notes.
It's what we get back.
Just tell me it's an accounting, it's an accounting entry.
Yeah, because it sounds like I'm saying the same, it sounds like I'm saying the same thing. And they, it actually, the, the assets, here's the difference. The assets includes the cash, okay? So basically, the assets are the cash, the $34,000. There is a grant receivable of $3,400. And then you have the balance of the three notes. And the balance of the three notes is $137,686, all right? So the assets are cash plus balance of notes. Deferred liability, excuse me, liability is just the balance of the notes. And so you just take assets minus liability and it wraps you back around to the same $34,000. So what obviously happens as, as Shear Cuts pays back, pays down their loans, the, those payments go right to cash. And I can tell you, like, today, I think there's $37,000 in that account. It grows every, every month when they make their payments. And there was a time that we thought we were going to get the balance from the Maynard Fund of around $70,000. And they have since changed their mind on that because of capital improvements that they need at their building. So they're, they're going to hold on to those dollars and invest them. And so we may not see that money until, until that mortgage balloons in whatever, 2023 or whatever, whatever it is. So that's, so that's six. Fund seven, the Green Mountain Power Cooperative Agreement. This is an account that was initiated back when Green Mountain Power was going through its relicensing. And to meet their recreation responsibility, they, there was $165,000, in essence, set aside for recreation improvements. Green Mountain Power paid, paid $7,000 directly for some improvements. And they gave the city $158,000 in a, in a, what's called a cooperative agreement account. We, we do not have access to that, to those funds. We get a monthly statement, but it's not like we can write a check against it or Joan can make a withdrawal from it. The only way that money can come out of that account is through a request to Green Mountain Power or the bank with, with Green Mountain Power's permission. What the city has used that money for is for the local share against the byways or any kind of recreational type of improvement that has occurred down in the basin area, most recently, the Stairway Project. You know, the local share on that was 10%. And so therefore, a major chunk of the, of the Green Mountain Power funds were used for that. If, if you're wondering, what's the liability line in there? The way that the agreement is written is that we, the funds are invested, and only the principal funds are the city's to be able to use with their permission, with their, like, pre-project approval. And every withdrawal requires their permission. There is a minimum $10,000 withdrawal. They will waive that, and I've had them waive that before for accounting reasons. What the $23,012.15 represents the interest that has been earned on that $158,000 since the money was given to the city back in whenever, Joan, 2002, whatever it was.
2002, maybe?
Okay. And, you know, I'm, I'm, my guess is Green Mountain Power may know that that money's there. And, you know, we'll have some conversations with them about whether or not, you know, once, let's say that once we spend the last dollar excluding interest, you know, I, I think it'd be a reasonable request for this, for the city to be able to use the interest on that money as well. I mean, I mean, the city could have just spent the $158,000 on day one and didn't. It invested it and just used it over time. So that's, that's hanging there. Fund eight and nine, the reason why I talk about fund eight and nine, there is really no, other than it's, it's kind of turned into, eight are, are reserve funds that are sewer-related, that, and fund nine are non-sewer-related. That really is just more coincidental than anything. The top line, the General Capital Reserve Fund, I think there was a time at, at City Hall that they thought that that was sewer money, but it's, it was never sewer money. That was, that was City Hall Capital Reserve Fund. It's what, that $18,789.97? As you can see, that has been spent, and that was, that entire amount was spent as our share on the sprinkler project. And so when we do, when we do, this will be the last year, obviously, on that fund. It zeroes out, it's done. One of the things, Bill, if you, you want to talk about this sheet, because one of the things is that I, if, instead of me going through 23 funds and then having the council, if somebody says, you know, Mel, is there a poli, if I forget to say, there's no policy, or there is a policy, or somebody says, you know, is there a policy, should we have a policy?
Yeah.
I don't care when to have that discussion.
Well, you know, I don't either. I mean, I guess I, I knew about a lot of these funds. And a lot of these funds are small. They're, they're very direct in terms of, you know, income expense, you know, who's decision-making. I didn't know, because I don't know the history of many of these, if there were funds that did not have a policy...
Yep.
...that maybe should have. And the one I was thinking of particularly was like the Water Tower Fund, because I don't think that that does have a policy.
The only policy that that has is that, is that it is used for, for public improvements. I believe that's what the policy, but it is not.
And that, you know, I don't know if we want to do something or not. I mean, I know that, that the watershed has a policy. I think Ray Davidson has a policy.
Yeah.
I didn't know about, you know, a lot of the small ones, I really don't care about. But I just threw this together as, as something to look at and consider in the event we wanted to create a policy for, you know, any one of these. And it just talks about, you know, the, the history of it, its, its income and its assets, and then, you know, what's the purpose, what's the criteria for funding, and how do we do it? And so it's, it's just meant to create some discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let me, let me burn through a few and get to the tower fund, because some of these are real quick. You know, BioSolids budget, Bio, I don't know why it says budget there, but anyway, the, the Bio, oh, I know what it says. The BioSolids, this is something that I think that the city council ought to talk about at some point. Somewhere along the way, there was a policy of the city council, this is back in 2003, I believe, that any connection fees, the $1,340 per unit that people pay to connect to the sewer system, there was a policy that, that those dollars go to the BioSolids Fund, all right? Now, I can tell you, I think that the reason why they were directed to the BioSolids Fund is because the city didn't have any money to, to dispose of their BioSolids. And so that was, Joan can verify, that was, that, so how do we come up, how did the city come up with the money? That was one source of the money. Frankly, I disagree with that policy. Now, it's a different time. I'm, I'm sitting here with a $90,000 fund balance carryover in the Sewer Department. We have money in the BioSolids Fund. I, I don't have those kind of issues that are challenging that thing. So I can tell you, my, I've never agreed with this thing as long as I've inherited it. I really feel that connection fees, that every dollar of a connection fee should be used to pay down the bond. I think that that's really what a connection fee is doing. A connection fee is really buying into the plant. And as long as the city has a debt against the plant, I would think that connection fees would be used to, to pay a portion of that annual debt. Now, once the annual debt is paid off, and there's about, there's only about three or four years left on that debt. We pay $123,000 a year. I think it's three or four years left. Once we get to that point, you know, I think that there still needs to be a connection fee. And those connection fee dollars should go into a capital fund. Now, you could put them into a capital fund today if you wanted to. I just, I, I just end up feeling that when there's, when there's debt, it should go towards debt. It's all sewer money. It doesn't really make any difference whether or not you, you take away $20,000 and put it over here. It, it doesn't affect anything. But I can tell you, I, I don't think it should be going into a BioSolids Fund. Sewer line replacement, I can tell you, you know, obviously, you know, Jimmy Laro and I make these decisions on which, you know, we, we know which lines need to be replaced sooner than later, because it's either a wicked amount of infiltration or my crew is having to go out on Saturdays and Sundays to, to repair. So that, that sewer line replacement, it's not, it's not a mountain of money, but those decisions are made, I don't want to say spur of the moment, but they're, they're made by Jimmy and, by Jimmy and I. Capital improvements, sewer capital improvements, that's really plant or pump station related. And those, those expenses obviously are handled by Marty, Joe, and myself.
The revenue source for those three things is tax dollars and budget?
Oh, no, no, no tax dollars. All out of the sewer fund.
All out of the...
Sewer, sewer assessments. Yeah, there's, there's three line items in the sewer budget. One is a BioSolids allocation, another is a sewer, sewer line allocation, the other is a sewer capital improvement allocation. All right? Fund nine, obviously, fire department vehicle replacement, self-explanatory. Let me just tell you, there was a time when you could buy a fire trucks cheaply. We used to put $10,000 or $20,000 a year into a fund. And when you accumulated $50,000 or $60,000, you bought a fire truck. Those days are gone, okay? We don't put any money into a, into a fire truck replacement fund any longer. What we do is we pay down debt, because we have whatever, $300,000, $400,000 worth of debt in fire trucks. So the whole thing with fire trucks has totally flipped over. We used to buy trucks with cash, and now we buy, buy replacement trucks with bonds. The 10, if you're wondering like, well, what the heck are we doing with $10,823? What that is, it's an odd, odd amount, but any time that we sell a fire truck, like when we sold the old 307 or sold, you know, the old swayback thing, or sold it, like the mini pumper, we sold that to the Sewer Department. Those dollars go into a, a fire department replacement fund. So anyway.
Do you, now, if you buy a new truck, do you just take that money and put it towards the, you know, when you, when you get the loan?
We, we probably would, Bill.
Payman or something.
We, we probably would. It would put a very small dent in that, but yes, that's what it's for. As a matter of fact, any of that bond, when, if we have to take out a bond anticipation note, we funnel it through this fund. And then when we pay, when we get the proceeds from that, we funnel it back through this fund. So the fund, that fund, particular fund in fund nine, also acts as like the transfer account for when we're buying, when we're buying a truck.
Well, you gotta, you think about the cycle, the vicious cycle here. Where do those dollars come from in the first place?
From the, from the four towns.
From the four towns?
Right.
So we got to figure out how that meshes back together and it lands back, so everybody benefits.
We have relinquished the Ada Gagne Fund, right?
That's my next one. The Ada, yeah, that's the next one. Ada Gagne Nativity, Joan is continuing to email with her contact person with, this is June 30, okay? Keep in mind, this is June 30, not, not today. And I can tell you that the money hasn't gone yet, because you haven't seen a check in your, in your warrants for this. But we're, Joan is in the process of getting, whether or not we need a W9 or not to, to cut that check. But you'll, this money will be, will be gone soon. Water Tower Reserve, Bill, Bill started to talk about that. And, and the only thing I say is that, yes, there was a policy that said that, that the money had to be used for public improvements. There's an unwritten policy that says that the water tower money should be used as a local match to leverage more dollars. The, what it, what it, I'll say what it lacks, if you will, is any council, any mandatory required council action relative to the expenditure of that fund, all right? And, you know, I don't, I don't care. Whatever you, if that's something that the city council feels that the, it's $100,000 a year, all right? And so therefore, potentially, it's $100,000 out the door. You know, if the city council feels that that fund warrants a similar policy like the watershed and the, the Davison, just direct it, I don't feel like it's my money, you know? I don't, I don't.
Yeah, and I guess I don't, I don't either. I mean, I get, the other thing we talked about a few months ago was, you know, we're getting a lot of money now with, you know, cell phones, but 10 years from now, that they could be doing it all in a different manner, and that money could all disappear, so.
Yeah. We're going to have to bring our discussion to a close here very soon. So if we want to just round this up somehow, because should we finish the other half at another meeting?
Sure.
Next meeting, we'll do the same thing. Everybody come at 6:30, and we'll pick this up again. So, Bill, do you want to offer anything more? We have just a minute or two left on where we're going with this.
Well, no, I mean, I think people can take it back and look at it. And if we, you know, we can talk about this and say, are there other funds that we think we want to formalize a policy for? And if so, you know, is this, this is just meant to be a template that we can work through in order to try and do that.
Okay. And I, and I don't think that we're ready to actually formalize any action on anything that we started. I know we talked about the Water Tower Fund. We know that that's going to need some work. We know that the BioSolids budget. Now, when would we do that, Mel? Would we do it at budget process? Or would we actually put, we could put a policy in place and...
The, relative to the directing of the BioSolids, relative to connection fees, that's a policy. It does not...
So we can change it anytime?
Change it anytime you want. And we just would need to be told where to direct it. And then Joan, when, when connection fees come in, Joan would, would direct it according to that policy.
Okay. I am going to declare this meeting adjourned and reopen it up with the regular meeting. If anyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to fall. Okay, first off, we're going to ask our first set of visitors, Allison Rimmer and Eileen Corcoran, to speak on behalf of the Friends of the Opera House. Can you kind of give us an update as to how things are going and...
Well, hopefully you got the report that was, that I sent to Mel in your packets about what we've been doing lately. But we've had a lot going on, which is, which is a great thing. Even though usually summer's a slower time for us, we still, we actually had a swish in December, an early fall, 2,000 patrons through the door in July through September, which is, is great. And we just had a really wonderful event Friday. I don't know if anybody saw the picture of the, at the Indy. We're Treasure Island, we had a kids theater program, and all the elementary school paint dressed as pirates. And we had a really fun time doing that. The, I don't know if Mel will mention this or not, but the sprinkler pump work is actually going on this week. So it's very exciting about that moving forward. You know, financials and fundraising, we're, we're sort of running on budget for 2012 at this point. And that's sort of where we're looking to hope to end the year, as long as we perform well on our last few events that we have, which include Peter Riero on November 2nd, a big show for us. And then our Dessert Bash on November 17th is our fall fundraising event. And we continue to sort of work with the community. We're going to be helping with some of the Pumpkins in the Park stuff going on. And then obviously, the Holiday Stroll is a big thing for us coming up at the end of the year. We hosted the Addison County Chamber of Commerce annual meeting this fall, which I think was a great way to get folks into Vergens. A lot of those people these days are from Middlebury area. We hosted the Way to Go Vermont reception a couple weeks ago, which was a wonderful thing for Vergens, I think, to have and to get that recognition.
You're going to have to bring that muffler and stand it here.
It's a great, it's a great award, isn't it fun?
Joan would be glad to share it with you.
And one of the other programming things, we're, we've sort of been talking with some folks from a couple of the churches and the food shelf about doing, as sort of a response to municipal funding from Vergens and the other four towns, is hopefully implementing a free ticket program, which would give a chance to be able to give a, a number of tickets, depending on the event, free to folks who request them, in the hopes that sort of with the economy the way it is and with people's lives, that there, there are no barriers for people to come to the Opera House and to be able to take part in these programs. Because we know that's been one of those issues for, for folks, is that when you start to get, to get talking about money, you want people to have these opportunities, because we feel that opportunities are what's important, not necessarily the money, though we do need money. Part of, you know, of that has been for the summer, Tara, I'll leave Tara right here, did work reduced hours, which did save some money and allow us to be on budget for the year. It's, it's not helpful as far as the, the amount of stuff that we're doing and trying to keep that going without that infrastructure of staff. So we're continuing to work on support, business support, you know, corporate support, other, other methods of sort of upping our budget and getting more consistent funds in from some, some other sources that, so that we can have the budget that we need to make sure we can do all these wonderful things that we want to do. We did form an advisory committee, made up mostly of past board members and some nonprofit folks. It's helping us to sort of work on some of these questions about how to increase support, how to do some planning, some other ways of looking at some of these issues that we have to hopefully get some more involvement and some more eyes on that. And the board is working on strategic planning for 2013. Right now, we're working hopefully with Middlebury College and possibly doing a program with some of their students to sort of help with some planning or marketing and programs, maybe next summer with an intern to, to again, sort of help with these, with these aspects of what we need to do. And I guess that's all. I don't know if there's any questions about...
So I was going to ask the council, does anyone have councils of Eileen or Allison?
I would just like to say I'm impressed with the, the budget, staying as close as you have. And I think all you said, I mean, I read your report, you know, I think the things about, you know, free tickets and getting people in, you know, who are unable to otherwise, it's a great idea. And good job.
I have three questions.
Yes.
Underline 5,000 versus public support contributions 10,49107, is that, is that where the city's $10,000 is?
Correct, yep.
Okay. The other thing, can you tell me how an income can be a negative number under all membership?
That's actually membership expenses.
Okay.
It, for some reason, comes up as all membership. And that's, that's how it's been set up. And I think it has to do with, with filling out the 990... been set up. And I think it has to do with the, with filling out the nine ninety because something, I mean, it's how it was set up by our account people. Um, somehow something to do with how that becomes a, a membership expenses gets put in there for some reason instead of, I'm, I don't know exactly why it's up there, but it's, it's basically, that's membership expenses. So instead of being under expense, it's under the income, but.
Well, I'm sure that's a challenge to you because Mel's gonna be, wanna, have an answer.
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't know if, I think it has to do with something with how much our folks.
I certainly understand about net, netting out, like, let's say if you did a mailer in, in hopes of getting membership. And if you, if you were to net that out into one line item, it would be a positive number.
Yes.
And if you, and if you don't, it just seems funny for a, a negative number to be in the income column. But that's just me.
I mean, in some of the ways, some of like, I think even like under fundraising events, there's some of that too, that doesn't really necessarily show up as a separate line here where again, some of the things like cost of fundraising versus, you know, what you make out of it becomes a net, you know, sort of gross for that.
So the other, the other question, and I know, I think you've shared this with me before, but I, but it totally escapes me. You're on a calendar year.
Correct.
Okay. And so from January through September, you have a net income of a negative number, twelve hundred dollars in whole. Obviously if the city hadn't have given you ten thousand dollars, that would have been eleven, eleven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Correct.
So you have some reserves?
Um, not much right now. I mean, the majority of our reserves were sort of, um, taken up both with sort of costs associated with the sprinkler and with, um, covering the deficits that we had the last few years. So we don't have much for, um, reserves. And but part of that was also that we, part of the change for Tara's hours was sort of part of that and that she wouldn't be back in the same schedule she was if we hadn't gotten the municipal contribution. So that's.
You don't have, you don't have an operating note. I mean, it's cash, you have cash.
Yeah, not, not much.
Okay.
Anyone else? Questions? Well, thank you very much and, uh, we'll be, uh, asking you to come back and join us, say around January-ish. All right. And so next, I see Mr. Kevin hasn't made it.
No, I think I'm on my own.
Well, we'll throw you a life jacket if you need one.
All right.
You're on.
Okay. Um, I have a, sorry, I'm new at this, so, oh, I should bring this to you. Um, I also have, can I just grab one? This might have one. Thank you. So one of the big things that I worked, started working on, um, when I was new executive director, was the renewal application for, um, the downtown designation renewal, which we have to do every five years as a designated downtown. Um, we were scheduled to have ours submitted in March, was it, Mel?
Yeah, I think so, that sounds right.
Um, and because there was nobody really at the helm of the partnership at the time, it kind of slipped through the cracks and it wasn't, we didn't have to do a renewal when Mel was manager, this is his first renewal process too. So it kind of slipped through his cracks. So we ended up getting put on a ninety day probation, um, the City of Virgens thing for our designated downtown. Uh, so we had ninety days to resubmit, to actually submit the downtown designation, which we did. Uh, and as of September twenty-fourth, um, our application was approved, um, and we are now no longer on probation. So that is, so that makes sense. I sent, I brought with me, because I didn't want to see them, a copy of what the renewal application looks like. Um, in it, if you're interested, is a copy of our budget for 2012, 2013 fiscal year, because we run on fiscal year.
Is that the, a, a full-fledged copy?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a full packet. Okay. So we'll just ask that, when people get done with that, okay. I just definitely want Joan to end up with one.
Right. Mel has a copy of it too. Uh, he has the full-fledged whole packet as well. Um, and then also in it is some of the notes that the, um, downtown, and Mel has a copy of this as well. Um, this is the notes that, um, downtown director, um, the state program sent us in response to the package. Um, so if she didn't have any outstanding issues with our application, uh, we will have an assessment in 2013. Uh, that's something that also happens every five years and that's where the board and the director is assessed by the state program. And she'll come down to Virgens and do that. Um, and then in the letter, you can see some of the other things. Um, a lot of what I've been doing is trying to just kind of get my feet under me with this new position. Um, attending the state mandated meetings with Leanne and some of the other downtown directors. I went to an overnight retreat, um, which was really helpful. There's a lot of different parts and pieces to being a designated downtown. There's a lot of reporting that has to be done, um, and being trained on all of that. So I've been doing a lot of that. Um, I also begun working on some of the events coming up, um, in the fall, one of them being Pumpkins in the Park. Um, the chamber is no longer involved in this one this year, so the partnership is taking over the chambers also. This is a work in progress poster that we're working on and, um, I've been working with the mayor and, um, a group of people to organize this event and really expand it. So we're adding quite a bit to it that hasn't been there before, including a five K costume race, some spooky stories at the library, a pumpkin cook-off. Um, we're also trying to get more involved in some of the other events that are happening in Virgens, on the holiday stroll. And, um, planning a new event for Virgens for the late winter. Um, we're looking at some sort of mystery event, uh, that we've been talking about. Um, so we're excited about that.
That's, uh, that's under wraps. You're, you, you know, you might get happy to hurt if you tell anybody about it.
Yes. So, uh, so it'd be a new kind of late winter. We're, we're thinking about March event. Um, something to help get people into Virgens, to get people into our businesses from outside the community during that time when a lot of our businesses struggle.
You, you and I need to meet on that because I was called the other night and that person would like to get rolling on some stuff.
Okay. Good. Um, so you can see on the bottom part is some of the upcoming goals of the partnership. Um, one of the goals, um, one of the big goals of the partnership is to work with the rec committee, which I sit on with Joe, um, to get together a survey that we'd like to do this fall, um, to try to get, there's been a lot of ideas floating around about different things people would like to see in, in the city. Um, new walking paths, a dog park, a boathouse, and trying to get some real tangible numbers on, on what, who, if those are really supported in the general community, um, and what those numbers are. And then when we have that evidence of support for some of these, we can go out and actually start looking for grants and funding for some of these things that we're looking at. Um, so I'm gonna work with the rec committee, um, putting together a survey for that. And then the partnership will put together a report and then bring it to, um, the council to see and, and review. I'm sure I covered most of it. Hopefully that's, I apologize if I talk fast. All right. Thank you very much. And I'll have these up around town. We have a partnership meeting, um, Thursday morning at seven thirty, if anybody's interested in coming. And we're gonna approve this and then get these out and up around town.
Great. Any questions? Tower, please. Everybody's gonna dress up with costumes, carry parking, a pumpkin for the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
It's different age groups, families, individuals, adults, you name it. Hope to see you there.
Yeah. And you thought you were gonna, you meant you were dressing up for the run.
Uh, never know. Actually, actually I got a, I got some decorations I gotta put together that day and dressed up from cooking two hundred and some doughnuts the night before. So, you never know.
I'm a mark boy.
I'll be running around my kitchen. Good report, Tara.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, okay. So, next visitor, Susan Ferlin. Uh, just start the conversation by explaining where this kind of came from is, um, someone had mentioned, I forget who it was, that the sign in the old cemetery was looking a little frail and that we ought to do something about it. And because Susan and some of her other friends and, uh, people that are doing research, um, have been so involved with the cemetery and where it's going, uh, we thought it would be nice to get them involved with help design a sign. And at that point, it was suggested by, uh, a couple people, Susan and I think Mrs. Bignell, uh, that the name be changed. Uh, so what, after we announced it at the last meeting, I asked Susan if she could have come tonight and kind of give some information, uh, so that people could better understand why they are recommending a name change and to help us sort out where and how we go. Susan, floor's yours.
Sometimes it's really hard to present here. You're just kind of a floating island, but we'll do the best we can. So I guess I'd, I'd start by having you think for a minute. If I mentioned to you a style of home, like a cape or a salt box or a colonial, I'm sure all of you immediately could imagine what each one of those homes would look like. And then if I gave you a certain time period, if I said it was the early seventeen hundreds that I wanted you to think about one of those styles of homes, again, that would bring in certain factors. Something like a central chimney and a cape style home in the early seventeen hundreds. Your beams for your home would have been hand-hewn. It wouldn't have been used, wouldn't have been using machines at that point. You probably would have had a lot of pegs in the house. Well, the same thing is true of how people bury the dead. That has changed throughout the years according to the technology and then also the culture that we're dealing with. If you talk to young kids, they automatically want to talk about pyramids and the whole Egyptian burial of the dead, which is its own era. In the North America or continent, we have burial mounds from Native Americans which date back many years. And then I think even in, um, Mexico and the pueblo areas, there's cave burials. Well, in Virgens, we start out at the beginning of our town with our town fathers sitting down and realizing we have to have a place to bury the dead. We've got more people moving in and we need to think practically. So in the town council minutes, which were dated April seventh, seventeen ninety-eight, a survey is presented to the council members for a road to the burying ground. And that's the term they use, burying ground. When Reed Ferris quit claims land to Virgens, that deed again refers to it as land for a burying ground. And in the town council minutes of January fifth, eighteen oh three, they vote to raise a tax to defray putting up a fence. And again, it's referred to as a burying ground. It's not a cemetery. Then there's a shift in terminology. And this happens probably about the time that Prospect Cemetery becomes open. And then also the Roman Catholic Cemetery or Saint Peter Cemetery also opens. And that seems to happen sometime in the late eighteen forties, that we now have three cemeteries in town instead of just our one. And at that time, we switch. In the annual reports for March seventh, eighteen seventy-six, they talk about incidental work being done and they talk about, um, again, the cemetery fence, they pay eight dollars. And again, this time they call it the old cemetery to differentiate between Prospect, which would be your new cemetery, and then Saint Peter's. And then again, in eighteen eighty, again, in the town report, um, they're cleaning up the old cemetery, they pay a dollar forty-five. And again, they refer to it as the old cemetery. Then we get another switch or another shift when Arabella Woodbridge Lawrence arrives. She is a descendant of founding fathers, um, Vili Lawrence and Enoch Woodbridge. And Enoch was the first mayor of Virgens, also served in the Revolutionary War and went to Yale. Arabella had a lot of relatives buried in the old cemetery. And she felt very strongly that it wasn't being taken care of and she wanted care and maintenance to happen in another way. And at that time, it seemed the best way to do it was through the congregational church. So that's what the proposal was. And at that point, she refers to it as the old burial ground. She refers to it in a letter to Wayland Bristol, which was dated July thirteenth, nineteen twenty. And then Arabella does another letter and again, she refers to it as the old burial ground. In the trust document, that's how they describe it, old burial ground. And then, um, when Arabella's nephew writes to the town, then we see another shift. At that point, Arabella is dead, the trust is in place, and Wayland Bristol appears to be one of the prime movers in the trust and in management of the trust. And when he comes on scene, they set up an actual committee to manage the cemetery and they set up an account with the bank. And the account with the bank is listed as the first cemetery. So we've got yet another name added to the pile. When it's operating as the first cemetery, all of the checking account information is under that name. But it's funny when you go through the old receipts and the, um, shopkeepers of the town are writing out what the item is and who it's for. It's a mix of old cemetery and first cemetery. In letters, um, that Mary Grandy wrote, she refers to it as the old cemetery. And her letters were around the nineteen hundreds, nineteen twenties. So the next thing is thinking about Prospect Cemetery, what it looks like compared to the cemetery over on School Street. And there's some very marked differences between the two. One noticeably is size. Prospect Cemetery is a lot bigger than the cemetery or the burial ground over on School Street. Another thing that's very remarkably different and very noticeable is just the landscaping. In School Street Cemetery, there's no landscaping. There's no plant, oh, we're gonna have a shrub here and we're gonna have, um, flowers over in this area. It was just a pasture they took air over to bury people in, which is what happened in that time period. But when we get to the Victorian Age, they take on a whole different perspective in terms of burying people. And they want to be able to visit the grave and they want to be able to mourn and they want a nice place to go to. So the whole landscape changes from a very crowded place that you wouldn't want to visit to a very open place with planned walkways and vistas. I mean, Prospect Cemetery has a beautiful view that you look over the Adirondacks, whereas School Street is right smack in the middle of the town and you really don't see much of anything except buildings around you. And those are important distinctions between the two places and their time and history. So my recommendation would be that we stick with our founding fathers. We use their name because one, it does pinpoint that cemetery to a particular time and it becomes something that we used to call a teachable moment. Well, how come it's called a burial ground or a burying ground and how, and not a cemetery? What's the difference? Well, when you start looking at the two, kids probably pretty quickly can come up with, well, it's a whole lot bigger. Oh, well, you know, there's not walkways here. I can't drive my car through this place. I mean, at best I can walk through it. So there's a whole reason to going back to that. And I had submitted to Mayor Daniels, two prototypes for signs. All Virgens burial grounds. And then the dates, your first burial, your last burial, and then this one with an urn. And then the second one with a weeping willow. And the top mimics.
Those have to be locuses. Those places love with locuses.
But a locust is a symbol used on the gray stones. It's all willows. It's all that whole mourning and sadness.
A willow does more than a blue.
Oh, yes, they do, for more than one reason. And then the shape of it is what most gray stones in the cemetery are shaped like, many of them. So you do have some differences. Now for me, I can go either way with, um, burying ground or burial ground. I think all needs to be there because that becomes a modifier or an adjec- I think old needs to be there because that becomes a modifier or an adjective that they keep using over and over again. It's the old cemetery. It's not the new cemetery. For lack of, they didn't name it. That wasn't a priority back in the 1700s when you set up a burying ground. You didn't say, oh, well, we need to name this after our town father and say, this is the Enoch Woodbridge Memorial. It wasn't a place people went to. In fact, a lot of people associated it with a place of disease where if you went there, you might get sick. You might get what they got and wouldn't live much longer. And if you think of where that cemetery or burying ground is located, it's right in the center of town, which as towns began, that's usually where it was. But as towns got bigger and there were more people, they didn't want to tie up valuable land in the middle of town. They wanted to use that and they needed more place for more people to bury. So they moved to the outskirts of town. And I guess some people, I was reading about Massachusetts and their historic preservation of graveyards and they were saying that people really did think that you could get sick from being in a graveyard. And maybe with the burying practices they had back then, maybe there was that possibility. You know, there wasn't a whole lot of embalming going on, so. So that would be my proposal and my-
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Susan?
I'm fascinated. It's a great lesson.
Well, I do want to mention too that we are trying to start a historical society. And our first meeting is Saturday, October 20th.
If you hold it right towards that camera up there, we'll scan right in on it and give you some prime time, channel 17.
Saturday, October 20th?
October 20th at 10 o'clock at the Bixby Library.
10 a.m.
10 a.m. We're going to meet on the second floor. I know it's not handicapped accessible. And then as I was thinking, I was like, oh my gosh, the new senior housing has a community room, don't they? So at some point, we'll have to utilize-
By all means, by all means. Hit the button up and I'm sure they'll more than happy to join in with you on some of the conversations.
Is that going to be the title, the Old Vergens Burial Ground?
That, any name changes has to be approved by the council. That's a piece of property owned by the thing. And that's why we brought it to the board. So we've got to figure out, do you want Old Vergens Burial Ground? Do you want a combination of Old Vergens Burial Ground and Cemetery? Or do you just, what is the council, what's the desires of council?
Vergens Burial Ground. With the dates underneath it.
But should it signify old?
Burying signifies old in the title according to what Susan. Because that's what they call the old cemetery. You call them burying ground as opposed to burial or cemetery.
You want to make that a motion?
Sure. I'm sorry. Vergens Burying Ground with a date on the sign.
Sue, can we, can we have your copy or is that your-
And then I guess you need to just decide if you want a willow or do you want the urn.
That is, I think we can work that. I think we can work that.
So is that, are those the, 1979 was the last date that somebody was buried?
Yeah, it was Marine Bristol.
Mrs. Bristol.
Was the last burial. Well, it makes- His wife.
His wife?
It makes sense seeing as the role he took in it. And he somehow had to have had a map because he had to have known where the empty spaces were and where that map is.
They lived across from us when I was like, yeah.
Didn't they live on North?
North Main Street.
Street? Okay. Because another, another person who lives over there that we're trying to find out about is the first Negro sheriff in Vermont, Stephen Bates was his name. And he came to Vergens with Frederick Enoch Woodbridge, the son of Enoch Woodbridge, when Frederick was serving in the Congress, which was during the Civil War. It gets even more interesting. He has this Stephen Bates who works for him as a coachman or something, and he brings him back to Vergens. And Stephen, I guess, saved his money and was able to buy property in the town. He lived on North Street and also put up money for his bond as sheriff, so.
Well, I like the idea of separating a cemetery from the burial or burial ground. I can either, you know, I just think that if it's one or the other, I think that's fine. I would second your motion if you want.
The burying thing is just cool to me as opposed to burial. It kind of gives it a-
Yeah.
It does give it a historical look.
Well, and that's the term the founding fathers used.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. A motion by Peter, a second by Bill. Any further discussion? Ziggy?
I know it says old, but it's still to me, if I was coming into Vergens, it doesn't, I'd like to have it identified. How would we know it's the first?
By that term.
Yeah, but 1840 is an old cemetery and 1880. But somebody who doesn't know the history, it would somehow to say this would be the first old or the oldest cemetery. I'd just like to have some identification that they know that that is number one.
Most folks who are doing genealogy research are familiar with the term because if you Google online, if you Google Massachusetts cemeteries, New Hampshire cemeteries, you're going to come up with burying ground and burial grounds as your names. And those are going to be the oldest.
It would be nice to have that.
Well, you're not even really going to see it.
I know, but I just wanted to somehow describe it as the first.
It's a way for us to help educate people as well, that there is a difference between a cemetery and a burial ground or a burying ground. And at first, it may not be obvious to a lot of people, but in looking at it, hopefully we will inspire them to find out more. And now all of you have been educated and you'll say, well, the founding fathers referred to it as a burying ground and that's why we did it that way. It wasn't just off the cuff. And seeing as that cemetery has been identified as so many different names throughout the years, it just keeps changing and changing and changing, it would be nice to have one that everyone agrees on and that people aren't saying, oh, yeah, it's the one over, oh, it's the School Street Cemetery. Wow. Yeah, it's located over there, but that's not why I've got it.
Any other questions, Susan?
I guess the other thing I could say too is a lot of towns now are coming up with tours that you access through your phone, walking tours, so that you don't even have to have a person present. You just tune in and you go through. Right. And that could definitely be part of the whole process right there. You'll notice in Vergens, we have three distinct places where the dead have been buried and three different names. And here's some of the reasoning why.
A treasure hunt in Vergens, no dating allowed. I have a motion, a second, any other further or any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Old.
No, no.
No, excuse me. Vergens burying ground. Okay.
I can't wait to get in.
Next trick.
With the dates.
With the dates, yes. On the sign.
That's the other piece you- What the council need to figure out is when it is going to be open. I've talked with Jerry Vesper. I don't think he can find his key to the cemetery lock.
Oh, we got one.
No, there's another, there are two locks. Right. I talked to Chris Baer and he said, that's what we can do. There we go. And speaking of that, I did let Chris know what a beautiful job he has done mowing that cemetery.
So the crew has done a great job.
Where are the dates, please?
Excellent. So the only other thing that we need to figure out, and I think this is the minor of the two things, is if we put some sort of a willow tree on it and/or if you come up with some sort of a design of an urn. So we can work that out or just do it? Peter?
Urns, urns like new. Didn't that, no? Did they bury them in another way then too?
I don't know if they necessarily buried them, but it was a symbol of death.
I like the willow tree because I've seen that on lots of headstones.
And they're all around Vergens.
Pass those around.
There's another connection.
Okay, pass those around, look, and then we'll figure out what, how that's going to do and then we'll get going on a sign. Probably won't happen this winter with proper placement and all that stuff. So, and we'll figure out some sort of thing with a lock. Yeah, so. Excellent. Thank you, Susan. All right. Actually, we're going to want those because we're going to, at some point. All right, the warrants have been around. Does anybody have any questions on the warrants? If not, I would ask, no, lost it, for a motion to approve the Vergent City Council meeting for September 18th, 2012. Randy makes the motion. And Ziggy makes the second. Any omissions, corrections, errors?
One minor correction. Champlain brass is a quintet rather than a quartet. Five of us.
I'd ask, all those in favor, would that one change? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Go right into budget review, Malz?
Yeah, the budget report, it obviously reflects one full quarter. I just wanted to remark on just a few things. Right off quick, you'll notice that the taxes are about $3,000 above and that's because of the rounding when we set the tax rate at two cents over the last year's level. Also, what happens are when people file a wrongful homestead declaration or have a homestead declaration and they shouldn't, there are some penalties that apply and that's the line item that goes to something that we've contemplated is actually separating those penalties from the tax and current. One of the things you'll notice kind of throughout the budget is about fuel oil. We pre-buy and did not, I didn't have the rates before the budget got done. And so therefore, the budgets were pretty much based on historical information. However, last year, we had such an easy winter, except for the sewer department and of course, we buy the first 1,300 gallons for City Hall. The fire station and the public works, they actually had a credit on those accounts. And so when you see the public works and fire department under budget, that's why, because they had a credit. Police overtime is a little above budget, but it's in a heck of a lot better shape than it was a year ago. George and I meet on a regular basis to whatever we can do to utilize highway grants. We do that. But anyway, it's, I just wanted to let you know that I'm, I see that as well. Sure.
I've got a question on that. It actually comes out of the police report that's in the Madison Independent regularly. There are three instances in the last report of where Vergens officer, in one instance, went to Shelburne for a dog-related drug search.
Yeah.
Another where they went to Brandon, another drug and dog search, and then to Bristol. And what I'm wondering is, who pays for that?
Well, I can tell you, I only know about the Shelburne one because we recalled when George was in my office. And Shelburne doesn't have a dog and typically they use a Burlington dog. And the Burlington dog was not available. They had a car stopped. And, you know, I think George says, listen, can you just double check, triple check, make sure it's okay? And if you absolutely can't, then I'll go. They'll go. So it's, and I don't know, I don't know anything about the other. I don't know anything about the other two, but yes.
Whenever the officer and there was a, the D.R., the drug recognition expert in another paper, went out of town to do something. I just, I want to know who pays for that? Does that come out of our budget? And if it doesn't, there's questions about it. Or are there contracts with these?
Well, obviously relative to the dog, only George can accompany the dog. George's salary and so therefore, now however, you know, I'm going to say that that doesn't mean that George is free because if George is, if George has to leave town for any length of time and we have to backfill that, then the backfill is, you know, not free. Okay? So there is some ramifications of that. Relative to the D.R.E., that, I think that was billable, Joan. I think the D.R.E.
Oh, it was. I bet they already paid it.
Yeah. Well, however, that worked.
It's a grant.
Yeah, so we were able to bill Brent's time.
Okay, so it gets, that's-
Right. But, but that gets, those expenses, you'll notice in the budget, it's a non-budget police outside extra. That's where that gets buried, if you will. So, yeah, anything, if we can bill that and the brand, I just don't, I don't, I don't know anything about it.
Would it make sense to other people in the council that there's some sort of arrangements made that whenever George goes with his dog anywhere, that we get paid by wherever they go so that we don't pay that cost? I mean, this is, this is three times in a week.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know-
It's not, it's not in the arena of mutual aid. It's not like the state police are out on the highway and they need somebody to show up and-
Yeah, if it's over and above, yeah. You know, I mean, obviously, you know, there is a lot of mutual aid that goes on that, you know, the state police call us, we call state police. You know, there's a lot of that inter-agency mutual aid. Relative to the Brandon, you know, I guess I'd have to learn a little more about that because if Brandon doesn't own a dog and they need a dog, I don't know the last time there was mutual aid between Brandon and Vergens, so I want to, I'd like to learn a little more about that one.
Okay. I guess my concept is, I mean, in terms of rescue, we don't have paramedics here. Charlotte has paramedics. When we go north with a call and we need a paramedic, there's an exchange that happens. The paramedic isn't free.
Money, money exchange.
Yeah, right, right. However, if Charlotte comes into town because Vergens is out, there isn't any exchange with Vergens and Charlotte because they get paid for that directly.
Right.
Sort of thing. But it's kind of like the paramedic thing, that it's an extra service being provided by somebody who's paying for it. I mean, we pay for the dog or we pay for the dog food anyway.
Right, right.
You know, those things, so.
Well, the Shelburne was an anomaly, I can tell you that. We're not, we're not the automatic call for a dog from Shelburne. It just, it just happened that they, that wasn't available. But the Brandon one, I've got my, I'm curious about the Brandon one.
But we'll continue to operate as status quo until we get things sorted out, right? Because we don't want to die.
It's hard to say no, I can, obviously.
Yeah, it's really hard to say no when you're in need and there's nothing else available. I mean, if you're searching for a senior citizen with Alzheimer's, you don't have a lot of time. You need to act real quick.
These are all drug searches.
Yeah, I realize, but I'm just saying, there's going to be situations that, you know-
No, but I mean, if Bristol, if Brandon calls, you say, yeah, we'll send him, but it's going to cost you X amount of money.
Well, there's probably some upfront discussion.
That's a policy question I'll throw to you to come back with at some point.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to hear, I want to hear more about how it happened. I want to know the circumstances because it's very possible, I don't know, I mean, it could be that Brandon uses Fairhaven's dog and it could have been a very similar situation. I don't, and I just don't know. I don't, I don't know. We obviously can't be the dog-for-hire-for-free entity for the state of Vermont, so I know the budget won't support that, so I'm going to find out about that. Anyway, relative to public works, obviously, we knew, we knew we were going to encounter costs with Crosby Farms. There was no real way of knowing what we were going to be looking at. So the stormwater management, that isn't, that isn't all Crosby Farms. There was work done on Hopkins Road, there was work done on Hillside Acres, but it's really collectively, that's why that line item is going over. I will tell you that, that when we applied for our FEMA money, the way that, when we had all of the Green Street erosion, we just charged that to the budget. And I did it that way because I know that FEMA money can be very, it's not guaranteed. There's a lot of paperwork and work to be done to be able to- There's a lot of paperwork and, uh, work to be done to be able to absolutely get made whole. So, I didn't estimate a FEMA, any FEMA revenue. We just paid out a budget and when the money came in, we offset it, uh, against the budget. And that was last year's budget. The state actually still owed us their share and it's the twelve or thirteen hundred dollars. So, when those, has that shown up, Joan? The twelve or thirteen hundred bucks state money? It's like FEMA stormwater money, but it's the state's share. It's okay, anyway, the point is, is that when, I don't think the money showed up. When it shows up, it'll be used to offset that line item. Obviously, twelve hundred dollars isn't gonna take care of two thousand. Um, uh, I got check marks all over them, but they aren't, they're things for me to do. Uh, over in the fire department, Jimmy's, uh, uh, feels bad about this and, and so do I. There was a miscommunication relative to, uh, radio purchases. Uh, all of the guys carry, what's it, a monitor, monitor, Mike? And they, they.
All, all the guys, officers.
All the officers, so, well, the thing is, I think these are, I think these are pagers.
Oh, okay.
These are the, not a, not an officer, that kind of a thing.
Okay, pagers.
Those, those don't last forever. Uh, they, they, they get, mics may last forever, but they do get beat up. And then you get serviced, the next thing you know, you should trash it and buy new. And, and so we try to buy some periodically. And Jim really thought that he had four of them in his budget to purchase and he didn't. And he ordered them just the same. So if you look over on page six on the top, you'll see this radio scanner purchase with a budget of a thousand and an expenditure of twenty-three hundred. That's why.
Just take it out of the salary.
Right. Over, under, a little, just to talk about the pool, a little off-season. Uh, if you're wondering about the Mary Johnson swim team fee where we budgeted two thousand and collected four, the way that the swim team fee works is they pay us some upfront money and then we keep a tally at the pool and calculate what the fair market value of those swimmers are. And then we get on the phone and, and figure this all out. And I can tell you what happened. They did cut us a check. They paid us a thousand dollars and then they paid us three more. And Ann Gleason and I got to talking too much and we forgot that, that they, the thousand dollars was a seven hundred and fifty dollar credit for Virgin's program and two fifty credit for New Haven. We remembered the two fifty. By the time we got done with the phone conversation, we both remember the two fifty, but we both forgot the, the, the seven fifty. So the point is, is that they have a seven hundred and fifty dollar credit for next, for next year, the social. I know you wanted to hear that story. That, that's all I had.
Any questions, Mel, on the budget? Okay, let's see. Let's jump to, uh, committee reports. Randy, how'd you make out with Northland? Dennis Lambert's.
Haven't called yet. I gotta do that quick though.
I understand that, uh, Lutech is finished at December thirty-first. Uh, I don't know if Mel's been able to.
I don't have any, I don't have any new information than what I told you last time.
And, uh, pulling teeth as to who maybe the next group in there is, like, it's hard to find out. I've talked to local representatives, I've talked to, you know, a few and we're just not getting anywhere with that information. Andy, if you can prod, we'd be more than happy to.
I will send an email to the D O L spokesperson and ask to be notified when they can check.
Part of the conversation today, uh, with one of our representatives is, uh, the lack of communication on both parties' part, both city, uh, I was told, and, and Northland and, and D O L, uh, has been very poor and that's why they think some of the things are the way they are. But I know that Mel has tried calling them several times to get their attention on some issues and they do not respond to his phone calls, so. We've tried.
They, they stopped answering my calls for some strange reason.
Yep. We tried a trick on one, one person that wasn't answering phone calls at my day job and I used my state phone to call this number that's this other guy's. I got the same results. Just pops up the state, so. Okay, um, anything else, Randy, to talk about?
Well, we can talk about the, uh, town fair at, uh, up in Essex at the fairgrounds. That was, uh, eye-opening event for me. We talked about, uh, maybe in the meeting itself for the, where I was a voting delegate, there was more conversation over verbiage for, uh, what the lobbyist, uh, V L T C's lobbyist were gonna try to present to our lawmakers. It was more, uh, wrangling over that type of information, uh, verbiage than it was anything else. Meeting was started at little about two fifteen. I left at four fifteen and they weren't quite done.
So is there any report or anything coming out to any, any of you that attended that as to the results? Is there some after-action reporting that's coming, that's gonna be publicized?
Not that I'm aware of, but there probably, it was basically what was, there was this whole book on, I meant to bring the book with me, talking about, um, their agenda items that they were gonna push forward with the, with the state house. And, uh, it was healthcare, uh, there was talk about using tasers or not using tasers. It was quite a few things on, um, Irene, there was a, a fair amount on the Irene storm and other things.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Ziggy? Seniors, any word, uh, seniors happening, doing anything? They got their, did they get their bingo going?
The last I knew, they had.
Okay, just wanted to.
Um. They borrowed some from the Legion and things like that, but I.
Good neighbors, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Legion? They are. They're very good neighbors.
Yes, they are.
Um, communication with other select boards, anything to offer there?
No.
Okay. I, I like it when we have odd meetings and then I have a chance, I just gotta remember when their meetings are so I can go. Um, Mr. Joe, sir? Recreation, anything, anything on any of your?
No, I received an email today, uh, regarding the outdoor classroom, uh, some, a little bit of movement there and getting the trails done. Um, we attempted to get a meeting together of the, um, committee and weren't able to do so. We couldn't find a time that worked. I've been out of town, so I'm gonna try, I'll try again.
Thank you. Uh, Peter, you're gonna be busy the next few days by the sound.
Right, well, thanks to, um, my co-chair of the energy committee, which, I don't know whether I asked this before, but I didn't realize that actually was a committee.
Oh, yeah.
That was constituted, I, anyway. So anyway, thanks Diane, um, who is, Diane Lampers has made some contacts with, um, the folks up in Ferrisburg and we're gonna be meeting for a presentation from the Sun Common People tomorrow night at six-thirty at the Ferrisburg Elementary School.
They have a goal of, uh, a thousand, uh.
Thousand in a hundred days.
In a hundred days, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's a challenge and I see there's another thing happening, is it Moncton?
And then Moncton is having an energy fair of seven and nine on Thursday night. And I'm gonna head out there again to make contacts with those folks, so.
I probably should have sent you information. I attended, uh, a REV, uh, conference. It had to do with renewable energies, uh, solar, potable tank, hot water, all that stuff. Uh, it wa- it was interesting here. We had some politicians speak and, uh, you know, they offered the challenges that, uh, some of the different organizations are going to go through and some of the restrictions that are being made, uh, slowing down the process. Yeah. It sounds like, uh, somebody wants to create some red tape, just to, and, and a lot of people just don't have, that, that group doesn't have the money to, uh, to fight some of the stuff that's popping up at them right now. So, not, not to give anybody a, a bad look, but I, it just seems like, you know, all that nice sun out there and why can't we use it in some cases? Um, that was the main part. And you, Peter, Randy, uh, I'm gonna defer that, are you gonna use that in your, uh, in your?
Police station.
Yeah, police station. You'll do that then?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bill, um, this Friday, or any other details you wanna offer?
Um, pretty well set from what I can tell. Um, I was planning on, you know, helping out with setting it up and so on and I thought we might need thirty chairs and they told me a hundred. So, uh, actually, Mel and I and Jimmy have been talking about just getting, like, the dump truck to help bring the chairs over Friday morning. And I've got my son and myself, so that should be fairly simple. I think everything else is on schedule from what I understand.
I hope to be back in town by about one. Uh, the only thing that Diane asked me to remember or remind everybody that the podium has to be back to, uh, Bixby that afternoon because they have the, uh, library.
On Saturday.
Yeah, so.
Do you know where those chairs are coming from?
The armory.
Armory.
Yeah.
Will be open?
Uh, it's Friday morning, yes.
Perfect.
Um, and the only problem is that we won't be able to return them on Friday.
Who?
Uh, because there's nobody, unless somebody knows how to get into the armory Friday night. Um, because, uh, the armory's closed at like four-thirty.
Yeah.
Um, so we have something to do with a hundred chairs until when they want them.
If we can load them, if we can load them.
Garage. I'll say if we load them back in the truck, keep them in and out of the rain and, uh, any other foul weather moisture and then just.
Bring them over Monday.
But they were more than happy to loan them over Monday.
Okay, thanks.
So, and I have the, um, officers, maybe I'll put them there.
It's the timing for the events.
We have to order the good weather.
Yeah.
The, it starts at three o'clock. There is going to be parking, uh, and bus shuttling from, um, uh, the, the storage, Jimmy's storage on, uh, Pean Rome. Um, there will be a few things, uh, set up down there, tents, uh, there's gonna be a little bit of food, I believe. I've heard, uh, the ceremonies start exactly at three. Uh, Joe and his group are playing, uh, some music before. We're gonna have the, uh, Canadian National Anthem and the U S, uh, National Anthem. Um, and, uh, speakers are allotted five minutes each. And, uh, I've already chopped half my words out already. Uh, but the governor is supposed to be there. Uh, there's a couple, uh, dignitaries, uh, Canadian and, uh, Leahy's office, Canadian, uh, consulate, uh, U S consulate, uh, somebody from the Navy, I haven't got that name yet, but I'm working on that, so, um.
There was a great article in the, yesterday's Independent about that with Art, just talking about the history of Virgin's and so on and why they wanted to finish here. So, if you have a chance to read it, it's good.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be five minutes if you get Art talking.
No, I don't. So, oh, I wanna embarrass him, so I'm, that's why I, no, I'm only kidding. I wouldn't embarrass Art. He'll get even. Um, okay, so that's, that's in digs is, uh, Friday, three o'clock. Anybody that can make it, please go on down. Just don't plan on parking down that way cause, uh, it'll be selective parking except for the handicapped. Um, okay. As, um, uh, next Saturday, a week from, excuse me, a week from this Saturday to twentieth, uh, Kenny Brothers, um, I don't know if we're calling it Haunted Factory, Haunted Happening, whatever. Um, that'll be happening, a, uh, twelve till three is the matinee and six till nine is the evening. So, uh, please come out and support that and, uh.
What was the date again on that?
Uh, the tw- twentieth.
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday, a week from this coming Saturday, not the thirteenth. So, and yes, I should mention this Saturday, uh, Bixby Library is celebrating its, uh, one-hundredth anniversary and, uh, I believe it's, uh, there's events going on throughout the day and in the afternoon. At somewhere around, I believe, two o'clock or so, there's a, a photo op gonna happen. So if you want your picture to be around another hundred years, uh, here's your chance to be in a picture. So, anybody got any newborns? We need one to. In the picture, a hundred years ago, there was a baby. That baby was our oldest citizen, um, so, or.
Water Street.
Water Street.
Cora Spalding.
Cora Spalding. Thank you. Senior mom. So, at least that's what we can best figure out, so. Um, on nine, as Tara, Tara indicated, nine, on ten-twenty-seven, we're having, um, Pumpkins in the Park, bigger event this year. Um, more of an, what we call all-day event, uh, not sure what all-day extended to, uh, but some players will be starting around noonish or so.
Uh, well, the, there's, um, the Lions Club is sponsoring a five K and one mile costume run. And that starts at, uh, nine in the morning for registration and then the race starts at ten for the one mile and then ten-thirty for the five K. Um, and that is a fundraising event for the Lions Club. They're taking the proceeds and putting it into their scholarship fund. And then after that.
If there's gonna be any sort of certificates that need to be done up, will, I'm gonna have to know what those are.
For?
For any of those. Are they doing their own trophies or?
I think they're doing their own trophies.
Okay.
Kathy Cannon is organizing it, so, um, I think they're doing all their own. And they do have a actual timer. Um, it's not Run Vermont, it's another organization that they're paying to come down so that it is an official race with official times. Um, and that's important to those people that are, you know, gun show racers.
Yeah.
Is, it is a clocked official race. Um, and it is pretty similar to the Virgin's Day race, um, route. It's just a little bit off just so you can end and finish at the elementary school, for short and fresh. Um, we're doing spooky stories at the library, um, a pumpkin cook-off on the park between three and five. Uh, people bring anything baked, all it has to have is pumpkin in it. Um, and we're gonna have judges for that and then after anything that's left, we're gonna sell all the money, proceeds to that, so it's gonna go to the food shop. Uh, we're doing a trick-or-treat on Main Street. I have, I don't know, several businesses right now on Main Street committed to that. Um, and they'll be open from four-thirty to five-thirty and kids can walk around as well as at, um, Virgin's residential care home. They'll be open at that time as well and kids can trick-or-treat then. And then the evening part is similar to what we've always had with Pumpkins in the Park. It's, um, Officer Harka will do, um, his kid's safety talk here, um, the kids will parade around the park. The mayor's wife will slay away all night making donuts, um, and we'll have the pumpkin light off, lighting in the wards and that sort of stuff.
So, I still gotta get ahold of my judges to get them lined up, so I'll have to redo that. Um, Mel, update personnel policy. We still working on it?
You got it, October, right?
I, I wrote it, I wrote it October because we are now in October.
It's at the top of my pile.
Okay, there you go.
I put it there tonight just so.
Our, our target is for at least Peter and I to have something for, uh, for the next meeting. Not, not, at least Peter and I will, will have met before the next meeting. Whether or not we have something for you, not sure.
Completing the in-house, uh, salary survey. How's that going?
Is that Peter and I? That's ours?
That's you?
Yeah.
That's you too.
That's ours, okay. It's ours.
Okay. Jones, have we started? Have we, excuse me, have you started cleaning out the back room and garage yet?
Um, no, I wouldn't say cleaning it out, no.
Let me tell you what I've done, a little bit, I haven't cleaned anything out in the back garage, but I can tell you, we have a moisture problem in the back garage and, and I actually called and talked to Bobby Fisher to get some kind of an assessment, if you will, on what it would take to, um, from, cause.
Moisture seal?
Yes, no, like having a system back there, I mean, it's not.
A, oh, a dehumidifier?
I mean, we, you know, we have a relatively new, uh, dehumidification system for here. You know, I mean, I know sometimes it's cold in here, but it used to be damp and cold and it's not damp any longer. So, that's one, that's one of the things I've got him, uh, looking into, uh, because really, cause it really could be a good storage area back there, but it can't be a good storage area if I'm in the current environment, it's awful.
Okay. One other announcement, I did get an email, uh, there was some talk about possibly someone coming from the school district to do a little presentation to the council and I waved that over and, uh, I kinda slept through the cracks and didn't get back to them. But I, I, I thought, and cause Bill commented, yes, there is a definite, definite difference between city, church and school. We're gonna keep the division. The only thing that I would like to recommend that they are having, um, more, they're having open houses, they're having other, uh, meetings and gives the citizens of Virgin's and surrounding towns that watch this the opportunity to go and get informed as to what they're asking for. In no way do I support or whatever our legal term is.
Or endorse.
I don't endorse or.
Oppose.
Oppose.
Oppose what they are doing, all right? I'll take my chances at the voting polls with everybody else to offer what my, I want to happen. But it is an opportunity to become very well-informed, and let's try to get this done at a one vote versus a two vote, and I'm not trying to knock anybody, I'm just trying to get the information out to the people, so, you know, we're well-informed. Right now, I think six point five million.
Six point five million, correct.
Is the dollar figure on the tag, so.
They are offering walking tours at these meetings, so you can walk through the buildings.
Yeah. Anything.
And there's, there's a, I believe there's a FISH meeting where they'll go over the plan for this new field and track outdoors as well.
So, I will see if I got my latest email. I was out of town this weekend, and I think I got one, and I'll share it with, if I can find it, I'll share it with the council, so that they can know that those, that information. Okay, now we're off that. We're going to, any visitors that wanna offer anything? Hi, Chris. So, no, no visitors comment, public comment? Okay, going to old business, Mel, A.
Yeah, appointment of planning commission member. Shannon and I worked together, it was primarily Shannon's work, got a letter to the editor in the Addison Independent relative to the vacancy, and asked folks to get in touch with he or I by October nineteenth. And I do have one candidate that has already expressed interest, and there may be more. And today's the night, fourteenth twenty, your, your next meeting is on the twenty-third. And so, it's, what it's, what is hoped for is that if we, more than likely, there'll be interviews regardless, but the interview team of Shannon, Jason Farrell, and myself would be, those interviews would be held on the night before the city council meeting, and that group I would hope would give a recommendation to the city council for, at their next meeting.
Very good. I'm gonna just jump ahead to new business, 'cause at one, some point, we're gonna have to go into executive session.
Yeah.
To eight A, and have Mel explain what that is, 'cause we wanna get that information to Andy.
Yeah, Mark Hatler, obviously, we have a three-member board of listers, Karen Quigley, Bill Pocket, and Mark Hatler. Mark Hatler, he and I had a bunch of communications about something, and embedded in one of those emails was his notice of resignation as being a lister. Obviously, Mark has moved out of town, so he actually did resign before he moved out of town, so we have a vacancy. And I do have somebody who's interested in the position, but what, what we need to do, Joan, is, is to put a notice out legally, have a notice of this vacancy. And I, I would suggest that, that we use the same date of October nineteenth. Then anybody interested in that position, get in touch with me, and it would be a position that if, if appointed, you're appointed only until town meeting day of March, so, and actually, the, the work, at least in Virgens, occurs in like February, and some of the work will occur in February, and so we're, we're hoping that whoever you appoint gets a taste of the work in February, and then might be a likely candidate to run for that position, you know, for a three-year term or whatever, whatever's open. So, again, we'll, I hope to have a recommendation back to the city council at the next regular meeting.
And so.
I'm gonna do business items.
Sure.
May. Is this a place for?
We can, we gotta, we, we got some other items to go back to, but we'll go ahead, as long as we're in business, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Peter.
Actually, this is another police department thing. In that same article in the Independent that was talking about, there's a, a short article about the license plate reader that was used, actually identified somebody who shouldn't have been driving, and they got somebody who was allegedly intoxicated off the road. I've got four questions about that thing, the license plate reader. Obviously, it's really good for what it's used for that way. My questions are things like, how many other license plates were scanned on that day? While this, while the policeman is sitting there with cars coming at him, you didn't just scan the first car that comes through and finds this guy. So, how many other plates were scanned? Where is that information stored? And for how long? And who has access to it? Because I think those are all very serious, fundamental, you know, Big Brother, that's the wrong term, I'm sorry, but, you know, Big Brother sorts of questions, that if it's
So, given the, for, give me the four questions. How many scanned?
How many other plates were scanned on that day?
Okay, the, the answer is, they're all scanned.
Right, but there's a, I know, but there's a.
You wanna quantify.
How many cars went by, sort of thing? I mean, how much, what I'm trying to get a picture is of how much information.
Yep.
Goes to wherever. The second is, where is it stored? How long is it stored for? And, and most importantly, who has access to that information? And the last, the, part of the reason that, that this jumped out at me is the last information that I read about this system was, nobody knows the answers to those questions. They don't know what's happening, the information, they don't even know who has access to it. So, can my cousin who works in the Newport Police Department go in and find out where Peter Garen was on September twentieth by checking the scan thing?
Don't know.
For example, I know you don't. I, I didn't figure it had to answer these questions, but.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, I, obviously, I mean, I, I can, I've talked to George a little bit about this, and, you know, obviously, I can tell you that, obviously, George is using it as a tool for their job, period. Okay, period, it's that simple.
Yeah.
Now, what, what else does this thing do, and whatever? Obviously, I'm, I'm gonna stick my head out and, stick my neck out and say, I'm sure that George doesn't care.
I care.
I, I know you do, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I know he doesn't care, all right?
Right.
And, and what we may end up having to do is, is get somebody else to answer these questions, because.
I suspect so.
You know, George, I mean, I, 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 I wouldn't think George would know this, you know? 'Cause obviously, he's just using it as a tool, you know? That's all he's using, and it pops up on a computer screen, and they do their thing. And so, I think what you're, what you're concerned with is the, is all of the information that this is capturing that really isn't being used for anything, all right?
If it doesn't pop up, why store it?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, and.
And I, and I, and I actually asked George that, and George thought that it wasn't stored. Now, now, but, but I wanna find out if that's indeed, because, because maybe it's not, maybe it's not, when he, it may not be retrievable by him, but that doesn't mean that it's not stored.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, we can, but we, it may take, you know, you know, somebody above me and George to come down and explain what this thing is doing.
Okay.
All righty, with that, we're gonna jump back to old business, number C, police station site selection, we're gonna go into executive session.
Yeah, Christine is.
But before we do, okay, we're gonna do that for executive session, but before we're gonna do that, then I'll have you give your city manager's report, and then we'll go into executive session.
Okay, real briefly, city manager report. I too went to town fair, but I did not stay there till as late as Randy went, I, or nor Peter, or, or Rennie. I actually went to two sessions. The session that I went to first is I went to a session dealing with medical insurance change, and because the city of Virgens as an employer has less than fifty employees, there's a major change in, you know, acquiring the whole medical insurance deal that goes into effect January one, two thousand and fourteen. So, it's, it's, for me, that, that's kind of right around the corner, and, and, you know, employees, I need to understand it, 'cause I, you know, I know that, you know, I've had to restructure, I've restructured our medical insurance twice since I've been back here, and I've only been back here for three years or whatever, and we're gonna have to restructure again, and, and I know that employees rely on me to explain to them how to hell this thing, how the heck this works, so I'm, I'm, that's why I went to that session, and, you know, if this is where we're headed, it's gonna be very different, it's, it's gonna be very different than where we're at today, so I just wanna let you in there. As I mentioned, like, go ahead.
We couldn't, we couldn't do something where add the fire department in there in some manner, but yet give them limited benefits, and they'd have to pay for them?
They have to.
You're gonna have fifty members, right?
They have to be a full-time equivalent, and so, no, I'm not, I'm not hiring thirty-five firemen to work them at full-time, sorry.
Well, the council could be a full-time position.
They could be.
You're right there.
Yeah, they could, all right, all right, we're up, okay, we're up to twenty-two. Okay, go ahead. Anyway, the other thing I mentioned last time, next week, you know, we don't, we don't close, close City Hall to do this, but we have auditors coming in, I think Tuesday, Wednesday, and hopefully not Thursday. That, that's my hope, to get them out of here, but we've booked, we've booked Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so we'll have a, there'll be a couple of faces that, that we see quite often, you, you don't see working here, and I'm not sure what the turnaround time is. So, that's my, my report, Mike. Let me just talk just a little bit about police station. I wanted to, I invited Christine, Rennie obviously is not here tonight. The police station committee met two weeks in a row, I think in between city council meetings, and one of the things I wanna make sure that my recollection is right, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the city council on the site selection, the, the sites that are on the list are the city-owned New Haven Road Site, the, the Eagles Club is on the, is on the list, I believe. The Denikers is not off the list, but it's off to the side. The Virgens Building Supply was also off to the side, but I think obviously with Country Home Products being the high bidder on September nineteenth, and they're, they're gonna close on that property within forty-five days. I, I've, I've talked to Joe Perato and a couple other key people at Country Home Products, they're buying this place as long as the whole environmental things pass, whatever, whatever they need to do, so I can, you can keep it off to the side, but you, you might as well let it fall, fall off the list. I'm not sure how definitive we've been on the other north end of town, but I don't mind telling you that I have spoke to, I have spoke to Dan Flaster, who owns Ten Main Street, that's where the bicycle shop is. This is no surprise to him from a police station standpoint, that would be a tear-down. I've spoke to, I don't know that he owns it yet, but I've spoke to the prime mortgage holder of Auto, Virgens Auto, who is Bruce Berry. That, that property, like I say, I don't know that that one's specifically, I've lost track of which things the city council have talked about and which things the committee has talked about, but anyway, relative to the north Main Street sites, those two, either one of those two on the left, and I think we, we got rid of Vermont Industrial Parks because it was pretty clear it was gonna have to be a shared driveway. So, we're, we're, we're down to, I believe, four potential sites, and that's not to say that there aren't others, but the, the committee, although there's three members of the city council on that committee, the committee obviously feels that there's ti, that it is now time for the city council to have a discussion in executive session to narrow that site search even more with the possibility of granting me some authority to communicate with, with landowners for a potential purchase and sale agreement, which is, is an eligible item under the, under the executive session. I, I think you can even make motions in executive session dealing with sales, dealing with real estate transactions, but I don't, I don't.
Why would that be, you can have an executive session to discuss a specific property, why would a discussion of general properties fall under an executive session?
I think that there, there, we don't, we don't know, I think that logically, if there was, you know, one piece of property that we preferred over another, I don't think that it's, I, I think that it jeopardizes the city's negotiating ability to disclose the only site, if it was an only site. So, I, I, that's, that's my, that's my rationale, but I, but more importantly, I think that real estate.
A specific, specific parcel.
Am I right to know? Somebody Google section three twelve, I'll tell you, all it is, I can, I can tell you that, that a discussion relative to a real estate contract is eligible, is eligible discussion under executive law. I, for executive session.
You're not talking about a real estate contract, you're talking about potential sites in which you might be interested in purchasing. That's not negotiating a real estate option or, or a discussion of a specific parcel.
Joe, can you Google, can you reach?
I'm sorry, I no longer.
It's okay.
I think my own copy of it finally wore out, and I no longer have it in my wallet. I thought I did.
I have a statute, Title One, Section, I believe it's three twelve.
I have a question for the council about the potential sites, I've been meaning to ask this for a while, but I've been assuming, hoping that the council would get down to two or three choices, and then bring it to the town for information, voting, informal voting, whatever it would be, so if people have a chance to say, this sounds good to me, or for that site, or is that never being considered?
Well, I can tell you, this.
I need you, Ma.
This requires a bond vote, and obviously, there's an informational meeting that's required for any kind of a bond vote. The, the city council can have an informational meeting on anything that they, on anything that they want.
You can look at that one, I'll look at this one.
Well, I hope that we present.
Okay, it says negotiating real estate options.
Heather's saying whether or not it finally carries, because maybe C is the most ridiculous choice.
I'd say that's, and I would, I would interpret, interpret that.
I would, I would like the entire board to, to discuss whether negotiating real estate options means discussing which parcels you might be interested in purchasing.
At the end of this, it says, no binding action may be taken in executive session except securing, securing real estate options. So, the point is, to me, my, my reading of this is that discussion prior to the securing of a real estate op, real estate, securing a real estate option, I think that the discussion, discussion prior to that is eligible for an executive session.
My interpretation of it would be that if you're talking about a specific property in terms of agreement, that that is what's covered, it's not a general discussion when you're talking about several properties.
We have two lawyers here.
Where's Rennie when you need him?
The answer.
Have any luck?
Yeah, I, I'm not convinced that, that it's covered. I mean, you may be right, but I'm not convinced.
What harm is the open discussion? I mean, I think you mentioned that, but, but.
What, how does that, what harm is it, first off, and then it'll be, does that fall under?
Well, it's possibly, it might not be, it might not be legal executive session.
No, no, I understood that, but I was, what I was asking Mel for was, what?
I'm sorry.
What, what harm, or whoever else, Mike, what harm is there in discussing the options that are out there, and?
Sure. Let's say that you had two properties that were very similar, okay, very similar, and, but both would be fine, and, and I can tell you, let, let's just say that we have four properties. We have four properties, and, and let's, let's just assume that all four properties would be acceptable sites for a police station, let's just say that. And I think that's, is kind of where we're at now, unless the city council votes to not knock a site off. I believe that we have four on the list, two hanging off the side, all right? And if you have four sites, then what you wanna do is, you want to initiate discussions with, with property owners towards the securing of a purchase, towards the securing of a with, with property owners towards the securing of a purchase, towards the securing of a real, real estate option, it says option, securing, other than, it says secure real estate...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the beginning of negotiating, in my opinion, when you approach a property, not when you discuss which one you prefer.
Okay.
That's, that's the question.
Tara, go ahead.
I was just reading the thing, it says negotiating or securing of real estate purchase options.
Okay.
That's the word.
Negotiating or securing.
Or securing.
Okay? That's, and that's what I, that's what I want, I wanna have that discussion in the city council.
I don't think you're negotiating with the city council, unless you're prepared to discuss making an offer on a specific property with financial terms, I don't see why, why when you're discussing, making a decision on behalf of the people of Virgens, I think that discussion should perhaps be made in the open, that's, you know, and I understand that there, and I could be wrong, 'cause I'm not, I don't wanna phrase this as a challenge, Joe, I'm just trying to understand what...
And this does not have to be settled tonight, we can actually table it, and we do have the other issue that we do need to go on to executive session to give Mel his evaluation, which is in itself private.
What's the first part? That's the end of the thing, that's the, that's the latter part.
Yeah, it's the line item.
Okay, that's the end. What's the earlier one that says...
No formal binding action shall be taken in executive session except actions related to the securing of real estate options under subdivision.
Okay, now, earlier in that, is, there's a, there's, that's about the right to, to take action in executive session. Earlier in that, in that law, it makes reference to, it just, it says negotiating, negotiating a real estate transaction, I think that's what it says.
I guess the question is, how do you define securing a real estate? Because it's pretty vague, you know, negotiating or securing a real estate purchase options. Are we talking about...
Options.
I think that's, that's talking about voting to do that in executive session.
No, no, that's, that's the executive session law, how it reads. As Tara said, a public body may not hold an executive session except to consider one or the following, number two, the negotiating or securing a real estate purchase options, is not what we're doing.
I believe that's correct.
I believe that's what we're doing. I'm talking about securing...
That's right.
You said talking about securing an option.
That's what, and that's what it says.
We don't have option in front of us.
Negotiating or, the word or, not and, negotiating or securing.
Options.
Right, but if we...
Negotiating or securing, okay? So, I can tell you, obviously, nobody has given me any authority to secure an option, all right? All right? But negotiating or securing, you know, to me, you know, that, that law allows the city council to hold an executive session to discuss the negotiating or securing of a real estate option.
To discuss, so you're talking about discussing the negotiating or securing a real estate option, not the actual negotiating and securing of a real estate option. I think you want, it's just my opinion, but I think you want to set remove from it, from what they're discussing in the open.
Okay, you know, and basically, you know, here, here's, you know, just from a logic standpoint, if you take a literal reading, I believe, and I don't know if it rose in Andy's mouth, but if you take a literal reading of what he's saying, if the city of Virgens has four sites that would be acceptable for a police station, under, under Andy, under Andy's reading of that, it would be, if we're going to continue on with this process of securing a site, obviously, we don't need to do anything to, to secure the New Haven Road site.
Correct.
That's a given. The other three sites, we would need to secure a real estate option. So, a literal reading of that would be that I would have to go out with three, with the three property owners and, and attempt to negotiate a secure, a, to secure such an option, all right? And then come, and then come back to the city council to go into an executive session, okay? And I can tell you that I've talked to two, two of the three owners, okay?
So, you know, I understand where you're coming from, you're coming from the, you know, our feeling, or my personal feeling is that, I guess you're coming from the, from the perspective of securing means to, we come to a decision on a definite site, and we negotiate an agreement on that one particular site. Is that, is that, that's what you're...
Essentially.
Yeah.
For at some point...
If Mel goes out and talks to three, three sites, and you discuss options, et cetera...
Right.
That discussion, when it comes back, is in executive session.
And he's already talked to two of them.
Clearly, in my mind, because you've got the, you've got the dollars that you're talking about, and you're, we're gonna give you negotiating advice, et cetera. To me, that's clearly an executive session. I'm just in a gray area for everything that comes before.
Yeah, I mean, if you're sitting discussing the pluses and minuses of each site, I don't see why that discussion shouldn't be held in public.
The question is, is it putting the city at a disadvantage?
Exactly, exactly.
Discuss it? And that's the question, is, is it putting it at a disadvantage? If it's not, if you're discussing, if it's not, then it should be in public, if it is, then it should be in executive session. Those are the two differences. If it's putting, if it's putting the city at a disadvantage, then go negotiate a contract with somebody. If you're, then you might wanna consider doing an executive session, if you narrow it down to one spot, that landowner then could jack the price up.
Exactly, exactly.
It's a fair point.
You know, they could, you know, say we decide, okay, we really want, we'll say the New Haven Road property, and somebody else owns it, would the owner of the New Haven Road property could then say, well, this is their number one pick, I'm gonna hold my, the price up here, 'cause I know it's their number one pick. So, I can see why an executive session would be an advantage, because in that sense, the property owners and the public don't know the number one pick, and then Mel can go negotiate all three of them.
Right, the whole purpose of the latter part of that law, where, where there's, it's the only exception where a city council can have a vote in an executive session, it's the only one.
And it's to...
And it's the, exactly.
So that there is, it's price gouging, so somebody doesn't jack up the price of their real estate, knowing that it's your number one option.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, it's a question, but if asked what you're gonna be...
It's a fair point, but I don't know if that's what the open meeting law says. See, that's the, it's very specific.
Well, that's what it's, I think that's what it implies, is that you don't want to...
There has to be case, case law on this.
Right.
I'm not sure if it's settled there.
Again, you know, if you, if you look at this, and I disagree with you on the specifics, because if you read it, there's an S on the end of option.
Options, the S.
Real estate purchase option, plural.
That's not what we're discussing.
Sure it is. I think it is.
You're discussing it.
Actually, that is a good point, because you have several options in front of you here, if you're looking at several purchase options, if that's what it is.
We've got three possible...
Exactly.
...properties that we, we want to look at purchasing, but it's, you know...
There's more than just dollars involved, other things we have to look at also.
There's other things, I mean, there's, so, how do you...
Forgive my, forgive my diversion here, but...
Really, really interesting conversation, and I certainly see your point, but...
And I see, and I see yours, options, that, for me, that's where you wrote, Lynch's.
The option.
One of the things, and one of the things, I think that because we, we've done as, as much as we can in open session, I mean, all 13 sites have been out there, as we narrowed it, we narrowed, we did all of that in public session, and one of the thing, one of the things that, obviously, a real estate option is just that, it's an option, and you haven't bought anything. And relative to an informational meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm all for informational meetings, as long as it, as long as it doesn't, as long as it doesn't upset the ability to negotiate when you have multiple sites that are capable of, of, of be, are viable sites.
Well, thank you for bringing that point out, it helped, I heard it helped. So...
Should we take care of the agenda with Don Warren first?
No, actually, that one, newer, there's a new agenda, Randy, that, they paid today, so...
That's gone. So, I guess we've completed everything on the agenda, except for going into executive session to do two things. One being, give the city manager his evaluation.
City clerk.
City, I don't have Joan's ready yet, so, but I do have yours, and the council actually is gonna give that to you tonight, and to discuss the police station options.
We'll then ask them.
Yes. So, do I have a motion?
I make that motion, then we go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By Ziggy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain.
Abstain. Peter abstains.